Enjoy it, uh but what the schedule for the night for the side of the planning commission was training. We had to have so many hours of training per year. So I did ask Sheldon to come down and uh to give us some training because we wasn't sure when it's gonna be with the meet uh. Uh Thanksgiving and Christmas, you know, there around the fourth Tuesday, but uh. Uh so what we're gonna do is uh uh. Uh with just Greg and I here, I don't see where there should be any problem with us receiving our training since you came this far. We do have other planning members here, uh Georgie Brewer and she called while I was in there and her car is. Not running, so she couldn't be here and then we have uh Roger again and I don't know if he's gonna make it or not. Uh so and then we got one bait. Passy McCarter, she's along there, but she's uh, you know, she have heart problems that can move out, so we have yet to appoint one, but. I think that uh I'm gonna bring, I need to put that on the agenda for the city meeting that we uh, we need to appoint a uh. Another planning commission member.
So who is, who'd you say was not?
Passy McCarter.
Oh yeah.
You know Passy?
I don't.
You know, she live down the campsite, who's getting on?
No.
Yeah, she uh, she got real bad heart problems, so she had to move with her, with her family, I don't know where.
Sister, ain't it Arizona?
Oh no, it's pretty good.
I think it's Arizona.
Okay, but anyway, uh so we gonna need to, Greg, just put that as a memorandum that we need to. In the city meeting, we need to appoint another planning commission member.
Uh so what I'll do, like, since we're not able to vote on anything, we'll just table this minutes from September meeting. Until we have another meeting, cause they won't be official until we.
That's right.
Approve it and then I'll make a note about the position, so.
Okay.
Alright.
And of course, uh let's see, those two and then the president of the planning commission is William Robertson and uh. Uh he uh chose not to be here, so uh. Okay, so Sheldon, at this point, we ain't gonna hold you up, we're gonna just go ahead and and turn the. Uh meeting over to you for training.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, uh I appreciate you all for being here tonight and uh ladies and gentlemen of. In the audience and uh the gentleman on the commission tonight. Uh we, we basically gonna have to talk about two different things, but they were, they are related, we're gonna talk about. The subdivision process as it relates to streets and street acceptance and in the planning process. And then we also wanna talk about what's required under property rights, the required hour that we gotta have. Under property rights, we're gonna talk about vesting, that, that period, they different uh. And I'll get into that terminology and we get into defining what that's all about, that legislation that's in Tennessee code annotated. But uh I'll just, these two, let's, let's, let's go and dive right on in. There's a three-step process to, I do better standing up, uh uh so I, we can get out of here.
Yeah, I moved on.
Right, uh there's a three-step process as far as subdivision development uh within the uh community of Saltillo. We've got a preliminary plat process, we got the construction plat second, which is the engineering plan. And then third, the final plat. Now, when it comes to the streets, you got the basic layout of the street. Uh that's proposed to you in the preliminary plan, the preliminary plat. You don't even necessarily have to have the names of the streets uh yet. And but you know, you need to be getting them in your mind, this is far as developers concerned, but the developer comes in with the plat. The proposed layout of the streets, the lots and, 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 and different things of that nature. Uh that's just the preliminary, just to give you an idea of what he's planning on doing or she's planning on doing as far as the lot layout. The street design and how it's gonna tie into your existing street system.
Now, this, this not only pertaining to business, but individuals also, right?
Yes, sir, this is a subdivision building roads period, this, it, it doesn't matter whether it's. Uh residential or commercial or industrial subdivision, a subdivision is a subdivision, far as that is concerned, so. Once that occurs, the preliminary plat, everything is up to snuff with your regulations, y'all, the technical review staff. Uh which is me and probably other folks uh will look at it, oh, this is fine, it kind of conforms to your major road plan. How you tying things in, so forth and so on. Then, once you pass that step, then you come in with the construction plat or the engineering plat, this is where things start to get a little technical. Your lots will have the top polyphobe on there with elevation contours and stuff like that showing how the lots are gonna drain. The, at the plat, it show water lines, sewer lines if available, in addition to fire hydrants. Fire hydrants been there five hundred feet, if, if, if that's the case, uh. You get the really sophisticated stuff in the engineering or construction plat. And in this particular detail is the streets also, where the cross section of the street has to be developed or illustrated. And done by plan and, and showed to you all, and this typical cross section basically shows uh. Basically a six-inch gravel base and basically a two-inch asphaltic surface, whatever that might be or whatever you all have adopted. Uh as far as your wearing surfaces, uh conditions are concerned, as far as the uh. The asphalt or, or, or concrete that you, you, you build a street on. Those specifics have to be present during the construction plan. So we'll know whether or not those are in conformance to what you have adopted as far as the subdivision regulations are concerned. Regarding the street construction and things of that nature, so. That detail plant, detailed plan and profile, we call it the typical cross section of the street will be placed on that preliminary. I mean, not preliminary, but construction plan and along with that, cause I, let me see if I'm skipping anything. Yeah, we talked about includes the plan profile crossing, wearing surface based stormwater drainage. I ain't doing too bad, I'm, I'm getting old, but I ain't, I didn't get, that's pretty good, alright, then these, these drawings. Are basically submitted, they submit to y'all, real review, of course, I'll review what I'm most comfortable with, but I'll tell you. Uh I am not an engineer, although I got, I gotta know a little engineering, I gotta know a little bit about hydrology. A little bit about geometry and geology and all the other kind of stuff, but I'm not certified in those areas. That is for the engineer or, 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 or survey that's trained in stormwater drainage calculation. I can't do it all, I can tell you the common sense thing is, basically, it doesn't look like, um. You know, it, it looks like the water's gonna drain north south based upon the contours of the elevation of the. Uh the ground, the grading work that's gonna be done, that's all I can tell you. I can't tell you whether or not the water's gonna run, how fast it's gonna run off into the street and the weather, it's gonna go into the neighbors, y'all. I can't tell you that, I, 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 I can't te- I can tell you if the lot is terraced, elevated some. To where it's, you know, you have a drop-off on each side. That, and you, you got water falling on that flat surface, you know. Once you build and construct something, water's gonna fall and hit some, it's gonna hit the ground quicker anyway. Especially be digging up all the grass, and I can tell you, if that lot is terraced, terraced, the water's gonna hit, boom. And there's nothing there to catch that water, like a ditch or something that's running on both sides, that water's gonna run right off on the neighbors. And they might, uh so the neighbors might not like that, so that's, that's sort of the, sort of the thing that we look at. Uh under that construction, the engineering plans, because that's. Because those, those are the detailed plans in which the, the street is gonna be constructed, so. Then you have the final plat, where it's the legal instrument, and you got to have the street names by that time. You, you have your street names and all of that, and that, we're not gonna talk about fire hydrants and all that little kind of stuff, that was present in. In the construction, engineering plans, but the final plat is what the, the city or town takes or the developer. You don't wanna put it in the developer's hand, cause oftentimes when you, when you give that responsibility to the developer, oftentimes it don't get recorded. Now, we're not gonna say it's their fault or whatever, whatever, but if you take the, the fee that it takes to record uh, uh. The plat and stuff like that from them, you can ensure that your stuff is up to snuff when you send it to the controller, the treasurer's office or on the uh. The uh, the, the local uh registered deeds office, they take that, they see that, great, your map is gonna be up to date, great. They take that, find that, that's good, but when the plat doesn't get recorded, you, you already know, sometimes there's issues when you're looking at the map. Well, no, we got about four or five. Yeah, you probably do, but the controller doesn't have a plan, so that's, that's a whole nother sermon.
Let me ask you about the street name, so typically the developer would turn in their final plat with the street names that they came up with.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
But the, but the planning commission could say, no, that name is not something we will approve in our subdivision.
Right, you, you can't, you do have that authority, you can uh recommend something else on far as the street names, if it's, if the company. If you already have a street in the town that, that's named that already or, or something like that, or something that's not offensive, you know what I mean? Yes, y'all have that.
Okay, now, one other thing too, uh Greg, is that on nine-one-one, we have to go through them when we name streets too. Okay, so the nine-one-one board, uh, uh Brian Givens Savannah, he uh, uh he verifies all the streets and it's on a database for. So that they can fire uh first responders, anything like that, you know, and. And usually we coordinate with them once the streets have been submitted to us. And if we decide to accept those names, then uh we might primarily just pass them on to nine-one-one to make sure they're not conflicting with any of the other streets. And so it's, it's a, it's a two-step process for that.
Right, and along with the final plat, like we said earlier, it's a legal instrument to be recorded. Have to have street names and stuff like that, the streets are dedicated at that time to the, to the town. And just because it's dedicated doesn't mean that they the town of Saltillo streets. That once the plat is approved by the planning commission, that does not warrant automatic acceptance of the street. There's a warranty period to see if the street is gonna hold up and see if it's really built according to your regulations, up to snuff with your regulation. Uh I'm thinking about my grandmother, used to, she used to chew that gas snuff and she been on my mind also a lot lately, it's coming up on nowadays, that's like, I keep saying up to snuff. That, that's where that's coming from, so y'all just balance.
What's the warranty period?
The warranty period is whatever period y'all establish, it could be a year, two years, five. But you don't have to ever accept the street, that's, that's in the, that's in your, in your, in your, in your packet there. Uh whatever amount of time y'all think is sufficient, and you say, oh, this road here looks all, it's, it's alright, it's holding up pretty good. You can go ahead and accept it, and the way you do that formal acceptance is by ordinance, or you know, accepting the street. Making it a part of your, your, your road network, now, uh. It could still be a public street and not be a se- an accepted town street. Meaning it's been dedicated to the public, it's not a private drive, it's not a private street, it's a public street. But that developer responsible for that thing until the town or sends them a letter or sends them a copy to the ordinance stating that. We have uh accepted the streets in, in your particular subdivision, relieving you of that duty. Uh and most develop, some developers, when they come in with their final plat, if the construction isn't done at that particular time. They have a bond, some kind of surety performance bond, that the planning commission holds to make sure that the roads get built. And the fires get placed and the water and the sewer lines all get installed where they're supposed to according to uh the, the town's regulations. So uh just because it's dedicated doesn't mean it's accepted, so when we get on this last one here. That I just, it tells you everything I just told you, whatever period y'all come up with. And it could be a short uh period of time, it could be a long period of time, just, just whatever y'all comfortable with. That's uh until you accept the street, it's, 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 it's the developer's responsibility.
Okay, do we, is that, is that listed under, what is that list, where is that listed? And, and under the planning commission rules, right?
Uh it, it's the, basically, the subdivision regulations.
Is that in subdivision regulations?
Where everything is incumbent upon the developer, right, right, and, 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 and all it alludes to is dedication of the streets in the subdivision regulation. It doesn't say anything about acceptance, so, so once you approve a plat, it doesn't mean you accepted the street. That just means you, 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 you accepted the dedication and the proposed way in which it's gonna be located. But you're not gonna, you're not saying that that's gonna be our street this year.
But the warranty and all would be listed in the subdivision regulations, right?
Right, you're talking about the, the, the period, no, that, that period is, is not spelled out in the subdivision regulation, no, no, sir, it's not.
Okay.
So, and, and, and they, they have never been put in, in the subdivision regulation because.
Where would you put it in, I mean, we could go one year to five years or whatever, would we uh enlist that in?
That could be a city policy.
Oh, I got you.
It could be a city policy, cause that's really a city policy, and you really wouldn't wanna go and put that in your subdivision regulation. You could, but I mean, that's really a, a city policy on, on a warranty period and stuff like that. We could put it in there, but that's, that's, it's just pretty much really, we, we keep that uh period out of the uh. The subdivision regulations and just keep that in the city's apartment, okay, all that, now comes to the coup de grace. The final, the final countdown, my sermon coming to an end, talking to, uh talking about the vesting. Along with developments, subdivision development, where it be a plan unit development, subdivision, business site plan. Industrial site plan, what have or whatever, here's the deal. A, a, a planning commission can change its subdivision regulations anytime they feel it's necessary. Under the guise of the health, safety and welfare of the people, but when a developer comes in with his development. And you all hear, once he gets that uh initial okay from you all, he's vested. He's got a period up to two years to turn dirt, to do anything and improve that site, and if he does that. He, he has a, a five, he has five years, and he can keep coming back to you all. Uh far as his vesting, and what I mean by vesting, his zoning ordinance, his subdivision regulations, anything. As far as regulatory or tools or regulations that affects that developer of that particular piece of property. You cannot change it on him, you can change your regulations, but you gotta keep the same zoning ordinance. The same set of subdivision regulations that you all had adopted at the time that a, a developer was approved. You gotta keep that in the file with that developer.
So, so let me just give a example, make sure I'm understanding, so developer number one comes in. He, we approve everything, he goes on, developer number two comes in, we say, no, you gotta have sidewalks. We can't go back to developer number one and say, oh, you gotta include sidewalks in your plan too, right?
No, 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 that's right, that's right, you're absolutely right, if you didn't, if, if, if the sidewalk requirement wasn't there. When the, when the first developer came in, you can't go back and retroact and make him come in and say you need sidewalks too.
But the next guy that comes up, we can say, hey, we wanna add sidewalks.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's, that's how that works, and the maximum period that they can keep carrying his own is fifteen years. Fifteen years, they cannot exceed fifteen years unless the city uh gives, grants them that, uh grants them that the. Uh change, so in other words. You saying Sheldon, we can't change our regulations or anything and make him and he do it, you really can't. Unless he agrees to do, or she agrees to do so, y'all can't do that, uh and they can uh also. They, they can change their plans, they can change their plans somewhat, as long as their plans. Doesn't affect the health, safety and welfare of the people, then you all can stop, when it, it, when it gets to that. Those are the only appeal options that y'all have if it's gonna be a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the people.
So let me go back to the sidewalk example, so developer one started out, we approved his plan with no sidewalk. Well, he's not selling a lot of property, don't have a lot of perspective, he can come back to others and say, hey, look, we wanna add these sidewalks in this one, they, they can do that.
They can do that, right, we can't force them, right, right.
Okay, one thing you said was uh, uh, uh Sheldon, is that he had, they come within two years, right?
Right, the vesting, it's all in.
Okay, now what if they don't?
If they don't, if they don't turn over any dirt or do any, make any substantial improvements within that first two-year period. And he don't come back and ask you all for more time.
So far, they don't turn one shovel of dirt or don't do anything?
That's what you got, but if he go out there and do something, then you gotta just. Put it in the file.
I understand.
So they have a maximum period of fifteen years that they can, they can, they can do that, and uh. They all, you all have a, a specific, y'all have specific uh things y'all can do to, far as uh. That is concerned, as far as uh. Real definition for the back, yeah, it says.
Where would that be located?
Uh toward the back, they don't have any page numbers on here, I got this tricked from Tennessee code annotated, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get it out better than that. But I won't go to uh, it's the uh. It's gonna be the third page, uh we're just gonna start at G one.
G one, okay, that's what I.
A vested development shall not preclude local government enforcement of any development standard when. The local government obtains the written consent of the African law. Local government determines in writing that a compelling countervailing interest exists. Relating specifically to the development plan or property which is the subject of the building permit. And seriously threatens the public health, safety or welfare of the community. And the threat cannot be mitigated within a reasonable period of time as specified in writing by the local government. Or by the African using vested property rights. And C, upon the written determination by the local government of the existence of a natural or man-made hazard on or. In the immediate vicinity of the subject property, not identified in the development plan or building permit. And which hazard, if unconnected, would pose a serious threat to the public health and safety or welfare to the threat. Cannot be mitigated within a reasonable period of time, as specified in writing by the local government. By African using the vested property rights, so y'all can see how this is going, if it poses to be a detriment to the, to the, to the. Yeah, yeah, that plan can be, uh can be compromised, so uh but. Long as they on the good and on the up and up and everything is in conformance to the regulations. They're not gonna be a burden to the health, safety and welfare, water's gonna be installed properly, sewer and things of that nature, sewers, I keep saying sewer, sewer may not be available. But if all those uh apparatuses are available within the community and they tie into it and do everything right, they should be good. You want a developer to build his development before fifteen years, you, you really, you know, you want that done before they.
Or it'd be really big.
Exactly, unless he talk about two or three hundred lots or something like that, you know, and they do happen, they do happen, but uh. You want that, you kinda want that, now, they do, that, now, it does talk about phases and stuff too, thank you for that, sir. The phases, you know, you can go along phases, but again, remember. The initial set of regulations, gotta stick to them, stick, stick with that particular develop, regardless of, regardless of that phase. So uh no more than fifteen years on the vesting, and that's it, first initial two.
So a street that's added to the city limits of Saltillo has to be adopted by the city board?
That, that's correct, now, if a town annex is a city, uh annex is an area and streets are in there. You, you, you kinda, you kinda, um after a certain amount of time, you kinda assume responsibility of those streets, now, if those streets are just town. Then that warrants the question, why are you gonna annex anyway unless you're gonna improve those streets uh for, for the people? That's, that, that's the only thing, but the, yes, sir, that's uh, annexation really uh calls for a period of seven years to accept any streets and. Things of that nature, infrastructure and all that.
I thought it was five, but it's seven?
It, no, five years, excuse me, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's, it's five years, excuse me.
Yeah, a- actually, in any annexation, if I'm not mistaken, the state statute is five years. I mean, that's provide any services whatsoever through your planning services, is that not right?
That's correct.
Okay, so uh, uh. If that works for me.
So we, we just gotta remember that uh, that this, that this can, this can get, the development process can get very tricky very quick. And uh you, you have to be careful moving forward, but uh at the end of the day, you want a great product for your people. That's what it's all about, so that, that concludes our, our basically training tonight, just wanted, we, we did those other two trainings. Basically about subdivision development, we wanted to reemphasize the vesting part because this is a part of the property rights. Uh requirement, every year, planning commissions are required to receive training on property rights, and which is only five. Uh you know, so uh you know, we impose sometimes some regulations that affect the people in the good way. And they don't, sometimes they don't necessarily hear the good things that it affects and what it's protecting them from, all they hear is about is. Oh, man, government trying to protect, no, 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 forget that, I don't like part of the government stuff, so no, we not here to beat, 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 beat. No, we here to protect all men and, and make your land better, so that's, that's what it's all about.
Just, just sir, one instance, or so that me and Greg and so the folks on, on what they're not, this plat, this, this, what we train on tonight is pertaining to a subdivision, right?
Right, subdivision and the street, the street uh.
What constitutes a subdivision?
Uh subdivision is if you need a street.
If a person got some land and, and, and what constitute, if he divides it in?
It's in the, in the two lots sites, or a lot, I'm not gonna get a technical, so here's a, here's the, here's the lamest term for subdivision. If you cutting off a, if you got a, let's just say, you cutting off a lot for so-and-so, whoever your family member. It's, might be a minor subdivision, which is two lots, but it still constitutes need for, you gotta go beyond a deed. Because y'all have adopted subdivision regulation, you gotta bring in a plat, have a surveyor bring in a plat, uh and just show those two lots. If you got, if you're gonna divide some property and it needs a, a street, with street furniture, that's a subdivision. Now, the extension of water and sewer and gas, that used to be a part of the subdivision uh definition, but they changed that, they took that out. So they, they took that out, and we all thought that was a big must, so, but whenever you cutting off a lot. Uh creating a site, anything like that, that, that is essentially, or need new road construction, that is a, that is a, that is a subdivision.
Well, I think that make, you know, a lot of people think that you have to have four or five lots, but if you just buy a property.
Yes, sir.
If you buy, divide a particular property, then you are constituting a subdivision, is that what you're saying?
That is true, that, yes, sir.
And then, or if it need, if you divided and it need road furniture, road easement.
Yeah, easement, that's right, right.
Then it also comes to.
That comes for the plan.
So a person would need to provide the planning commission with plans for that lot.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And that would include the street easement as well as uh, you said it don't require utilities anymore, so.
Well, not on a, well, usually subdivision, that does require you to show your water and sewer lines in case somebody buy a property. They, they already, okay, we good here, and then they don't have to buy a lot, then they don't got deal with separate, you know. They, they can see it all in the plan and stuff like that, so yeah, yeah, but on minor, minor subdivisions. Uh we still require uh communities to show, uh developers to show the water and sewer lines if they're present and stuff like that. But nine times out of ten, if we know the water is there and the sewer's there and the fines there. Nobody's gonna just jump up and say, no, y'all, you, you don't have it on here, you can't, we not gonna prove it, we use common sense and judgment, but technically, it's supposed to be on the plan.
So, so let me give a real example, I guess you might not know, I, I had to live in these examples, that's why I understand it, so you might not know the street, but let's say, for instance. Uh off of Willow Street, Katy Did Lane and then Haystack, somebody owned that property and they run a road down between them. And they divided the lots officially, Katy Did Lane over there would be a subdivision, you know.
Right, 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 that's correct, yeah.
So that's what, so they took that big piece of lot, they run a road in the middle of it, they made some eight lots down through, so that, that.
That's a subdivision property.
So in the future, if somebody does that, they, before they start, they gotta bring it to planning.
Planning, that's correct.
Right, but it don't have to be that many lots, if they got.
That's right.
A, a, or two, just two, they still gotta bring it.
That's correct, now, what, what some communities have done. That's correct. Now, what, what some communities have done, uh, when it comes to just two, uh, lot, uh, just a two lots subdivision. What they, they have allowed to, the many regulations to now for the state law has a provision in it. Where if it's just two lots, you can approve that administratively with your technical review staff. That's normally your building inspector or your planner, looks at it, everything checks, it's good, it's fine. They just get the secretary of the planning commission to sign off on it, because everything is according to the zoning ordinance and subgrid is, is good. On minor two lots. We haven't done that in the subgrids, uh, for, for Saltillo yet, we were just getting started, you know. So, uh, if that's something you wanted, uh, to, to take a look at and consider, we can do that, or we can just keep it as it is. But, uh, but other communities.
Okay, now, I run into an issue in, uh, Baltimore, Tennessee. And a lady had a house. And she had another little house on the Sunny property, and she was wanting to deed it to her son. And they wouldn't allow her to deed it to her son because they said it wasn't big enough, uh, 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 is that?
Well, that, that, that.
The lot wasn't big enough for two houses?
They, they probably said that if, if she divided it off, the, the other lot wouldn't meet the zoning ordinance, it'd be probably just wrong.
You see, so, it does have to be a certain size.
Certain size, right, that's why when they say, uh, when you, when you build, if a community has a zoning ordinance. That does allow for you to have more than one principal structure on the lot, we're not talking about an accessory building, that's not a principal structure. Principal structure is the house. If you're gonna allow two houses on a property. You, you got to have enough area to whereas it'll, it'll pass on its own lot and meet your zoning ordinance, if you're gonna do that. That's why most communities, they say, no, only one principal structure on the lot, because they know, once they cut that off. It's not gonna, it's not gonna conform to the zoning ordinance, that's why they say you only have one. But, if you're gonna allow for more than one, you gotta make sure they got the acreage there, as to where if they do split up. The area around that second house, it, it can't, it's sufficient enough to meet your coal, or for your zoning ordinance, certain metal lot area.
Right, okay, and we do have it in our metal lot size, as well as, uh, I believe, uh, that it has to, uh, meet T D A.
That's correct.
Which is sure, you know, sure like that, so, okay, great, I'm done, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
All right, yes, sir. Any other question?
Okay, next time. Okay, so, here's the thing, uh, we just went through a planning, uh, training with, uh, our. Uh, municipal planner, Sheldon Merrill from Jackson, Tennessee, he's with Southwest Development District, and, uh. Uh, Sheldon, this was very informative tonight, and it added to our training, I learned a lot of that tonight, so. Uh, at this point, Greg, you have anything you wanna add to the meeting? I think, I appreciate you coming to give us a training and, uh, like I said, learn a little bit about what we're doing, hopefully make our community better.
Yes, sir, we'll be emailing you some of the tips and things too.
Okay, all right, so if there's no other questions with the board and stuff, we're just gonna deem this meeting adjourned.
All right, I'm sorry, I preached too long tonight.
Oh, you're done, good job, good job, good job.